Good afternoon, or evening. It feels like afternoon. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Vacaville Planning Commission to order here at 6:00. We'll now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Chair Klein.
President.
Vice Chair Fortney.
Here.
Commissioner Vargas.
Here.
Commissioner Lightfoot. Rudin.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkerson.
Here.
Commissioner Banta.
Chair.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Perfect, thank you. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
How do you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Yeah. Yeah, a little helper out there. Very good. So, we have the great pleasure and honor of swearing in a newly appointed planning commissioner this evening. And I will ask Director Morris, please introduce our newest commissioner.
Thank you, Chair Klein, and welcome Commissioner Banta or Banta?
Banta.
Let's get that out there. Banta.
No, it is Banta.
Thank you, I'm gonna get it right very soon. I believe that the city clerk at this point is going to administer the oath.
I speak your name as solemnly swear to solemnly.
Congratulations, Ashley.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Um, no. Thank you so much, and I'm excited and honored, and here we go.
Welcome.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask staff if there are any communications or announcements for this evening's meeting?
If you don't have any new communications, I just want to briefly announce that I will be presenting item 8A when the time is right.
Your turn. Our next item is approval of this evening's agenda. If there are no changes, do I have a motion and then a second to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Rudin, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Fortney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Alright, the agenda is approved. We do have one abstention.
I was here.
For the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay with, yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, the minutes.
Alright, I'm ahead.
Very good. Good reminder on that. Saved me a reminder. So, we'll now move to item 6, business from the floor. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the planning commission on any issue that is not on the agenda. There will be a limit of three minutes per speaker. Anyone would like to address the commission, you can line up at the podium. Otherwise, saying none, we'll go ahead and close business from the floor and move to item 7, the consent agenda. We have one item on consent, which are the minutes from the March 11th meeting. I was also not at that meeting, so I'm gonna thank you for the reminder. Commissioner Banta, I'll go ahead and sit that out as well. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? Okay, so, do I have a motion?
Motion.
It's been moved by Rudin, a second.
Second.
By Fortney. Will the clerk please call the roll? Call it.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes.
Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Rudin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkerson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fortney.
Yes.
Chair Klein.
I'm abstaining. So, I think that it passes. We'll move on to item 8. This is the draft Housing Elements Study Session. As our first business, as our first item of business tonight, we'll receive a presentation on the housing element. We'll hear a presentation by staff, followed by a commissioner questions, and then we'll open up for public comment as our typical flow for our business session items. The presentation for this item was presented by, I believe, Director Morris. Not saying Tyra.
Thank you, Chair Klein, and members of the planning commission. I am delighted to be here to present the housing element to the commission. This evening's presentation focuses on topics or areas that have changed since the commission's last study session in the fall of '22. So, I'm gonna go through some of the new programs, the revised programs, some of the specific sites that are affected as far as housing density, and then talk about some of the next steps. Essentially, a preview for the commission about what to expect at the formal adoption hearing that's coming up in May. So, I think I just covered the purpose. We really do this evening, the intent of this and your staff report is to focus on, in particular, housing programs that have been tweaked or are new and are impactful in our community, and then housing sites, really to showcase those sites on an individual site basis so that you all are very clear on which sites are affected. So, just very brief housing element background. The housing element is required to be part of our general plan. We update it every eight years, and it's the only element that gets full review by the state of California through the Department of Housing and Community Development to ensure that it complies with state law. So, unlike all of our other general plan elements, this element goes through a multiple review cycle with the state until they deem it to be adequate and compliant with the law. And essentially, it lays out the city's plan for accomplishing the housing, planning for the housing, and our regional housing needs allocation, which I'll explain more in a bit. So, back in September of '22, we had a planning commission study session on the housing element, the first public draft. And that really was a fairly thorough presentation of the sites inventory and all the, just meat and potatoes of what is in the housing element. We did the same presentation for the city council in October of '22. The housing element has six major components, and actually, at this point, with the last revision that I'll talk about, it is 750 pages long. This is not light reading. But the components include the housing needs assessment, where we look at our city's existing and projected housing needs. A lot of this, I mean, this is pretty much entirely data-driven. The state provides a lot of the data. We have a fair housing assessment that looks at fair housing issues and strategies to ensure fair housing and housing for everyone. Goals, policies, and programs is at the heart of the housing element, and that's one of the focal points of this evening's presentation. Essentially, the city is required to articulate measurable objectives and specific implementation programs, and you have to be specific about what you're gonna do, when you're gonna do it, and even sometimes how you're gonna do it. So, it's quite detailed. The housing sites inventory is our set of maps and tables that demonstrates that we have adequately planned the right mix of residential densities and sites that will achieve our regional housing needs allocation. The constraints analysis, which has changed a little bit but not much, looks at all the constraints to the production of housing. We put an example, you know, if our fees were too high or our procedures were too excruciating, or if land costs were either impossible or too, it looks at all, comprehensively, at the things that stop housing from happening. And then the last component of the housing element is the evaluation of past performance. And essentially, we have some explaining to do about everything that was accomplished during the last eight-year housing cycle. So, the city's RENA, and we did share this, and it has not changed since the fall of '22, we are required to produce 2,595 housing units divided across these three broad income levels. So, 1,081 of these units have to be deed-restricted and targeted to lower-income households, 409 units in the moderate-income category, and 1,105 units in the above-moderate category. In the housing element, we articulate pipeline projects in each of these categories. For example, we have some approved lower-income housing projects, but they haven't pulled building permits yet, so they count as a pipeline project. We have a lot of above-moderate income housing that's approved, that's in our pipeline, that's documented in this table. We document the sites these housing units are gonna happen on, how many ADUs we think we're gonna get. And ultimately, our housing element documents that we have planned for more than enough housing. Part of why we've done that, though, is because the state will often say, oh, no, these sites don't qualify, or those other sites don't qualify, and we wanted to make sure to go into this effort with a surplus. And that's just a nutshell. So, our housing element, as of yesterday, I'll talk about the third revision in a minute, we now have 40 housing programs. And if these numbers don't add up, it's because I didn't add the new program into the final bullets. But we have 11 of our existing housing programs that will just continue into their next eight years with no changes. We have 28 programs that are in our current housing element that have been modified under the direction of the state, likely to be more specific or have more timing on them. We have 12 brand-new housing programs, and that's where we have 13 brand-new housing programs. And then we have 17 housing programs that relate to the new requirement that the city needs to demonstrate that we are affirmatively furthering fair housing. So, that's what the AFFH is. So, the second revision, which is what the commission was sent with your packet, I don't think it was quite 750 pages, but it was close, it basically identifies the changes that staff made in response to the comment letter that we received from the state of California to try to get to certification of our housing element. And then, I just, of note, because this is important, ahead of our housing element development, our city council did adopt a comprehensive housing strategy, and we were able to pull those policies and programs and principles into the housing element. So, we consider that the two documents are fully connected. So, chapter 2, Goals, Policies, and Programs, this is where we did get quite a few changes as highlighted in the strikeout and underlying text in the second revision. And this whole section is about, again, the goals, what you're gonna do, how it's gonna be measured, essentially along the goal of maintaining, preserving, improving, and developing housing. Affirmatively furthering fair housing, a little bit more about this. This comes out of fair housing law. The goal of these new policies that we have in our housing element is to promote housing supply choices and affordability, to remove barriers that limit households' abilities to move to neighborhoods that they're choosing, and that is really a big one in this housing element. There's a lot more policy around distributing housing at different income levels in different parts of the city, and really, we have to show that we've made a rigorous effort to do that. Another component of the affirmatively furthering fair housing is conserving and improving assets in existing neighborhoods. Fancy term for that, place-based conservation and revitalization, and that is actually our new housing program, 40, that came out of the last round of review with the state. But it really is all about, our city does have, as documented in our conditions analysis, we have areas of the city with dilapidated housing stock, and our housing element is required to have policies that would target the city's efforts to improving the quality of housing, existing housing in Vacaville. And then the last one, and these goals, is preventing the displacement of existing residents from their homes and communities. That often happens, actually, as neighborhoods improve. People that were living in those neighborhoods get pushed out into other areas, particularly outside of the community, and so, we have to have policies that specifically address not displacing people from their community. I will not be going into detail on all of these programs as part of my presentation, but fear not, we can go into any of them that you're interested in, and we can talk about them more specifically. So, these are the new housing programs that relate to affirmatively furthering fair housing. They address special housing needs, providing a variety of housing, including housing units that have larger bedroom counts to accommodate larger families. We have very specific quantified objectives for our production of accessory dwelling units, recognizing that they help and provide housing for across the spectrum. We have specific quantified objectives for affordable housing construction, also for supportive housing. We have a specific timeframe for emergency shelters, specifically allowing them as a use that does not require a use permit in at least one zoning district in Vacaville. We have the requirement to implement SB 330. I mean, the good news is, we're already doing that one, but we have to create a certain form that complies with state requirements. And we also have a program about bolstering community support for housing production. And this is required by the state, and again, it's deeply embedded in our draft housing element. But I'm not done yet, there's more. We have a policy about development impact fees, and that one actually got revised for a couple different reasons, but the idea is, actually, the good news is, we just revised our development impact fees, so we can say with all honesty, they are accurate, we're not collecting more money than is needed. We had to add a component about our fees for service. Planning Regulation Amendments, there's that, emergency shelters. Inclusionary housing, we said we're gonna study it. That's what the housing strategy said we're gonna do. That'll be May 9th at City Council. Below-market rate loan programs, we had to set some specific funding goals for those programs. Again, with the housing rehabilitation program. At-risk units, these are units that are at risk because they're currently deed-restricted, but during the eight-year housing cycle, they might run out of their affordability covenants, so we're supposed to look at those and target those and try to keep those. Almost done with this list. There's a policy about supporting agencies that serve the homeless. There's a new policy about the housing choice voucher program. And getting back to that displacement theme I discussed earlier, there's a policy specific to demolitions, replacement housing, and what we do for people that are displaced due to housing development and other kinds of development. And then, the next set of housing programs, we've just covered the affirmatively furthering fair housing. These are ones that address special housing needs. So, we have specific policies about military households. And because there are farmworkers in Solano County, though there aren't particularly a lot in Vacaville, we have policies about farmworker housing as well. Every city in Solano County has policies about farmworker housing. That was one of our major changes between the first and the second round. Again, with the ADUs having a quantified objective for producing them. Again, affordable housing policy similar to the previous one about having quantified objectives for producing affordable housing. Again, about supportive housing. Some of these policies will be a similar policy in a couple different categories. On the topic of HE 19, Planning Regulation Amendments, we'll be redoing our Land Use and Development Code to make it easier for someone to get a reasonable accommodation. That comes about if you, let's say you have a house, and you wanna build a ramp in a place that it kind of violates setbacks, you can request a reasonable accommodation to do that. The state says we need to make that easy. At-risk units, policies about reducing displacement from these units that may expire from their affordability term. And then here's that housing choice voucher program, maintaining 1,392 housing choice vouchers. Okay, we're gonna get to MAP soon. So, another set of housing programs has to do with our land inventory. So, this isn't repetitive. Again, we do have to allow emergency shelters in one zoning district. We evaluated primarily commercial zoning districts, we looked at commercial highway, we looked at general commercial, and staff is gonna be bringing forward a zoning text amendment to allow them by right in the general commercial zoning district. HE 22 is a policy that we have to prioritize water and sewer projects to serve the sites that are part of our RENA. And that's another land-based one. We're still not to my MAPs yet. Now, we're still on governmental constraints. So, we have on HE 15, we have a list of sticks, I think, or so, Planning Regulation Amendments, and we get to choose two of those to remove. In the Land Use and Development Code update, it'll be coming the planning commission's way very soon. We need to revise our buffer requirements pertaining to citywide densities and zoning. We have to amend a longstanding general plan policy that says that we're aiming for 75% single-family and 25% multifamily. We need to take a closer look at what the mix ought to be. And we have to continue monitoring development and growth in the east of Leisure Town Growth Area. That area, which is also known colloquially as the urban reserve, is an area in our general plan that's identified for future development, but is being held sort of still until certain things happen. The state was very interested in that area, and they made us add some policies that we would further examine that. I would say they made, they required us to, they strongly suggested. And then, continuing on non-governmental constraints, we have policies about special housing needs and underserved populations. Again, Planning Regulation Amendments. And then we have a rezoning program, and I wanna go through all of the sites that are touched by that program so that you know what they are. And if you want further information about the sites, we can get into them in more detail. We're almost to the sites. So, under the topic of general comments, the state actually gave us a similar comment on a lot of the draft policies that this commission reviewed last fall. And it was basically about being more specific, and more specific on timing, and less "we'll explore", "we'll consider", and more "we'll go do", very directive language. We had to revise the programs to take another look at a couple of the sites that we'd identified, and to identify ways we can make those sites more feasible for housing to happen in the next eight years. So, that's the draft housing element and the key changes that were made since the last time this commission saw it. But then, the next part of my presentation, we wanna walk you through a set of general plan and zoning amendments that will be coming forward in May. As part of the housing element, we've committed the city to essentially completing three housing programs concurrent with the adoption of the housing element. So, these are those programs. So, the first one is implementation of a state law that specifically, any sites that we included in the previous housing cycle, and the one before that, and I think even the one before that, if they hadn't developed by the time we're in this housing cycle, we have to allow them to develop by right. No public hearing, no public process, just through a ministerial process. The caveat on that is that if someone wanted to develop these sites, they would have to deed-restrict at least 20% of those units to lower-income households. That is, so that is how someone could go about just developing these sites without a lot, without public input. And this is legally required for sites that we're recycling from previous elements. So, we have four sites that meet this requirement. The Markham Area Apartment Site, there's two Leisure Town Apartment Sites, and there's a Vanden Townhome Site, so I just wanna show those. This is the Markham Site, and you can't see my cursor, but we've circled and read the site, the specific site that has been, appeared in multiple housing elements, has not yet developed. So, if someone wants to develop it, 20% deed-restricted affordable at low income, and they would be able to get a ministerial approval. If someone wanted to develop it and not do the deed restriction, it would go through the normal process with the city. So, this site is, it's also, it's one of the sites that, because it's designated residential high-density, it is actually the maximum density range needs to increase from 24 units to the acre to 30. We have a set of sites that are designated residential high-density, and because of Vacaville's population, we are now over 100,000, so our residential high-density designation has to allow up to 30 units per acre. So, this site's affected by two different, two different policies. The second site, which is also affected by those two policies I just mentioned, is the Leisure Town Apartment Sites. There are actually two properties side by side between Yellowstone Drive and Leisure Way, behind the houses on Bryce Way. These sites have been identified in our housing element for a long time. They have not developed, and so the state is requiring us to make it easier if someone wanted to do a deed-restricted, affordable project there. And then the final site, because the last one had two, is the Vanden Townhome Site. This site is actually having a general plan change to go from residential medium to residential high-density. The density range, maximum end of the density range will change to 30 units per the acre. It's an 8.4-acre site, and again, if someone wanted to do affordable housing here, they would have a ministerial process to do that. Now, we're gonna talk about the 23 other sites that are part of our site program. So, we have a policy that talks about concurrent with the general plan amendment, changing the general plan and zoning of a set of sites that need to be adjusted to meet our housing element. So, we have seven sites, we've talked about a couple of them, where the maximum density is increasing from 24 units to the acre to 30, and these are seven vacant sites. And then we have 16 sites where they're being re-designated from maybe commercial to residential, or one kind of residential to another, to facilitate high-density housing. So, these are the seven vacant sites, and you'll recognize the first one on the left, because that's our site on Rocky Hill, as well as the three other sites in that neighborhood. So, these four sites are vacant, and the maximum density is increasing to 30 units per acre to meet the new state requirements. The second site is on Alamo Drive and Alamo Lane. It's been planned for housing for a while, and it's going up in density. And we have, the third site again, is that one over by Leisure Town. Our 16 re-designated rezoned sites, these are all a little different. So, the first site is over on West Montavista and North Orchard. This site is designated currently commercial office, and it would be re-designated to residential high-density, allowing for up to 30 units per acre. The second one in the middle is on Butcher Road. This is a site that's currently designated general commercial in the general plan, and would go to residential high-density. And the third site on this slide on the right is a site at Vacavelli Parkway and Allison Parkway, and this one would be going from commercial office to being planned for residential high-density. Continuing with our 16 sites, are these two properties that are bisected by Quinn Road, near Leisure Town Road, that would be re-designated and rezoned from general commercial to residential high-density. Then one in the middle is Orange Drive and Leisure Town Road, on the east side of Leisure Town Road. These sites are currently designated commercial highway, and they would be going to residential high-density. Actually, we actually have interest from a housing developer on the southern site depicted on that central diagram, so it's looking promising. And then the one on the right is the Vanden Road Military Housing Site that's been planned for a long time. It's proposed to go from residential medium to residential high-density to allow additional housing development to occur. And then our final of the 16 sites is on River Road, Rivera Road, I'm sorry for the typo, in Lower Lagoon Valley. This site is currently designated Business Park, it's next to the Ranch Hotel just south of it, and it's proposed to go to residential high-density. I went through the slides relatively quickly, but when we get to commissioner questions and comments, we can pull them back up and talk about them as much as you'd like. I'm gonna conclude the presentation, and then we'll, we have plenty of time for that. So, there's a bunch of Planning Regulation Amendments that are essentially in the form of text changes to our recently refreshed Land Use and Development Code. So, we have to add some specific definitions. We have to define mobile homes consistent with state law, and we have to define family consistent with state law. And these are actually things that have been on the state's books for quite some time, but we are finally committed to doing them as part of this housing element update. We have to allow that set of uses by right, I've touched on some of these already. We have to pick a district where emergency shelters are allowed by right. We have to allow large residential care facilities, which is, I think, eight, seven or eight patients and more by right. We have to provide allowances for employee housing by right. We have to allow single-room occupancies by right, and we have to also allow a low-barrier navigation center by right. So, these are all changes that will come forward in the updates to the Land Use and Development Code, and the commission will see them at the May 16th meeting, because this is one of our implementing programs. The next bullet talks about the Plan Growth Ordinance. This ordinance was established, I don't know the exact year, maybe 20 years ago, as an effort to control the number of building permits that were issued each year. I've researched this one, I don't know how much effect it actually had on building permit issuance, but it's been suspended because it violates state law, and it's still remained suspended to this day, and we are now going to go ahead and remove it from our books because we can't have this particular ordinance. The good news is, I don't think it will make a change out there, it's just something we have to do. We have to create objective standards, objective design standards, for minor use permits, conditional use permits, and adjustment applications. And we have to amend our reasonable accommodations findings. They seem a little bit too rigorous the way they're written, and they seem like they might intimidate someone from trying, and the goal is to actually be permissive, so we're gonna make it seem friendlier and more possible to get a reasonable accommodation. Okay, now I'm gonna just briefly go through the things we have to do right away, because as the planning commission, you're not only gonna get a package of the housing element, its third and final revision, we hope, and a bunch of general plan amendments and zoning changes, but over the next two years, by the end of 2025, you will be seeing different things coming your way as the advanced planning team is implementing the housing element. So, we'll be coming back with a density bonus update, addressing those special housing needs and underserved populations, policy about a variety of housing types. These are all things that we have to get onto the books in the near term. We have really detailed programs articulated in our housing element for production of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and we're committed to implementing those in the first couple of years. We have to assess, I think it was barriers to affordable housing construction, but I can get back to my notes if anyone wants to talk about that one. And again, supportive housing, emergency shelters, and these policies we went over about the sites included in the previous cycle. We are committed to getting that done, actually concurrent. We are committed to getting that done actually concurrent with housing element adoption. These ones, I think, are the ones that are in the next wave because they don't say they're. So we have some work to do on infill development, streamlining the housing process, facilitating a centralized housing services coordinator. There's a policy about community support. HE 14 is about our development impact fees, ensuring that they're not a profit center. They are not. And also adjusting our fees for service to make sure that those are aligned with cost recovery, planning regulation amendments we've talked about, inclusionary housing I've mentioned, and then the citywide densities and zoning. We talked about HE 18, the Site Inventory Rezone Program. We're also, as part of HE 19, having to look at our parking standards to reduce some of our parking standards to comply with the maximums that the state will allow us to require. We have some work to do in the Nettree Airport area, looking at some housing sites. We have energy conservation policies, water and sewer prioritization for affordable housing, as I discussed earlier. We are to set up a below market rate loan program for households that are below market rate to be able to purchase homes. We have a first time home buyer program that we're going to be creating and a housing rehabilitation assessment, really looking at where to target those efforts in the city. And then condominium conversion ordinance to set forth standards to ensure that those, the conversion of apartments to condos doesn't displace people when we are having a shortage of rental housing, at-risk units, fair housing assessment, again with the emergency housing, homeless continuum of care, policies for low barrier housing, again, the housing choice voucher program, and then a program for housing counseling assistance. Three more, oh, these are all the 23 to 25. So these are all the things that will be coming forward quickly in the next couple of years. So there's a policy about educational opportunities, housing needs data, and then assessing our non-governmental constraints. These are 36 programs that, as drafted, the city would undertake and complete by the year 2025. Okay, there are incentives for having a certified housing element. And I won't dwell on these, but in order to get certain regional transportation funding, in order to qualify for certain housing grants, especially these new pro-housing incentive grants, we have to have a certified housing element. So that's the goal of getting this thing certified in June is then we then qualify for these funds. And there are quite a few state funds that really, if you don't have a certified housing element, you are not eligible. On the, on the other side, the consequences of not having compliant, non-compliant housing element are being seen in certain cities in Southern California in particular, but also a lot of coastal cities right now are getting, are feeling this. Loss of local control, loss of permitting authority, whatever we've got left with all the changes to state law. If you don't have a housing element that's certified, and if you're in noncompliance, the state will step in and they will make the decisions in your city for you. Builders' remedy is something that I have not been aware anyone would like to use in Vacaville. But while we don't have a certified housing element right now, someone could come in and provide that they were willing to dedicate a large chunk of their proposed housing units to affordable housing. They could get a ministerial approval without a public hearing. And that's happening in coastal cities right now specifically. They don't have certified housing elements where people have been trying to develop for 20 or 30 years. That's where the builders' remedy projects currently are. And then it ultimately means that it probably gets worse than it gets better if you don't get a compliant housing element. So I wanted to talk about recent activities, just as recently as yesterday. So last week, our planning team got a call from Placeworks, the consultant that's preparing our housing element. And she had met with our reviewer from the state Housing and Community Development Department. And he basically said, hey, if you guys can change, if the city of Vacaville can make changes to this set of policies, and if you can get them done and on your website by Monday, that was yesterday, you're likely going to get a letter that says your housing element is conditionally approved. And if you don't do it, you're going to get a third letter and we're going to go into another round of review. So we scrambled. Some of it was weekend work and some of it wasn't. But we have now the third version of our housing element on our website. So you all were looking at the second version, the third version's not much different. I'm going to summarize the changes though. The term stronger commitments, the reviewer kept saying, you need to make firmer commitments. So this was about removing language that he thought was wishy-washy, like consider, suggest, explore, and turn it into do, like do this, do that, do that. So we did some of that, and that's all shown in track changes edits in the third version. We had to add some additional information about local housing needs. I think some of that might have been farm worker related, but I'm not 100% sure. We had to do some additional analysis with our sites, and that's all again shown in track change edits. And then we added this new housing program that is prioritizing the city's efforts to physically improve areas of our city that have the highest levels of poverty and the highest numbers of units usually that require some improvements. This is a brand new policy as of yesterday that's drafted into our housing policy, housing programs. Bringing our total of new, of total programs to 40. And with that, as far as recent activities go, we are now not holding our breath, but nonetheless waiting, expecting to get a letter from the state by April 24th. It hopefully is the conditional certification letter. That's, that's what this is. So hopefully this month, get the letter of conditional certification. A week from today, we're going to be presenting a study session of this housing element to city council. And again, really focusing on making sure they know which sites are affected. On May 16th, the whole matter comes to you for a formal consideration. It's going to be a big evening with the final housing element, final environmental justice goals, policies and actions, the safety element. And we have a couple of other things planned too. So that's an evening to make sure you eat a dinner before you come to your planning commission meeting. And then on June 27th, we are scheduled to go to council to try to get the adoption of, of these different elements. And then once that happens, if that happens as planned, we would then submit the housing element in its entirety to HCD for formal and final certification. And we are trying to get that done this, before the end of June. We have a website, and on this website you can find the third revision to the, the housing element I just mentioned. And at this point, I'm happy to take questions and comments.
Thank you, Director Morris. Questions starting with Commissioner Vargas?
The property earmarked for zoning, that's independent of the current project that's going on in Lagoon Valley, correct?
Yes, let me just go back to that. It's, it's, it's part of Lagoon Valley to a certain extent, but it's not part of the current development occurring.
Okay, thank you.
That was all your question, Matt?
I have a few questions. The first one is you mentioned a lot about changing the language to make it more structured from being like considered to like a doing thing. I guess my question is how for some of these do we make it even more of a doing thing? Because some of them went from considered to study. And to me, that seems really broad still. And that means specifically for HE 16, it was mentioned, the change was to from considered to study or whatever that one was. How is that going to be more of a plan?
That is a great question and actually a great example. So we originally had housing element program HE 16, which is about the inclusionary housing element. We started off in draft one with, in accordance with the city's housing strategy, the city will consider adopting an inclusionary housing ordinance. So, well, what does that really mean? So now it says that we will not consider, we will study the feasibility of adopting a housing ordinance. And we also had in the last revision to add language about consulting with local developers. That one is still, I would say, not as firm as some of the other ones. And I can find an example, and we were working on this as recently as last Thursday or Friday. But essentially, I'll give you an example of one, HE 19, alternative parking standards. The feedback from our reviewer is that it was insufficient to say the city will consider allowing the developers to provide creative solutions that could result in reductions to parking requirements. Now it says the city will amend the parking requirements for studios to lower the requirement and that we will also allow developers. So that one went from, we might do this thing and we're going to look at it to, we will be doing this thing. So that's an example of the firmer language that our reviewer insisted on.
Thank you. So can we still make it to something that would be like we would commit to?
Yeah, the feedback from the planning commission, if there's policies of, there's a lot of them as we just discussed. There's 40, if there's policies that you feel, as a planning commissioner, that we should focus efforts on strengthening or making firmer, that would be great feedback for staff to provide to the city council as part of bringing this to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, this is where we bring that in?
This is it.
Okay, all right.
Excellent question. So and in May, when it's adopted, we'll be able to see some of those changes?
Any changes the commission wants, or the council wants, we're going to try to make very quickly. But we have to be careful because everything that's in here now, theoretically, the state said, okay, you're set. And we, so if we try to like change anything, particularly soften anything, make anything less specific, that could really put a monkey wrench into our certification.
Understood. I have more questions about that, but I'll continue on to Vice Street reporting.
No, keep going, you've got the mic. Go ahead, Dan, we'll go down.
I'll, I'll do it this way, yeah, go ahead.
All right, thanks. Well, Director Morris, let's stay on that, on that theme. We go with stronger language, the do, the shall. Who's, and it's adopted, and we don't fulfill. Who's, who's the police at agency and what are the ramifications?
So what happens once, and we have one right now, we've adopted housing element. We have a new housing element that likely will be adopted this summer. So this is that annual reporting that comes with the planning commission every year. Every year, we have to submit an annual report to the state where we go through each and every housing policy and program, what we said we were going to do, when we said we were going to do it, and we report our progress. There, I've, I've worked for many cities at this point, or several cities, and it is always the case that cities cannot literally do everything that they're told to do. So there has to be some prioritization, but that's how the state keeps track of our, of our progress. We fill out those detailed worksheets about housing production, building permits, types of housing, and we also do a report on all of our programs.
And then ramification? I mean, we could do this year after year and not fulfill any of our obligations that we said we're going to do.
There's a lot of ramifications because the state is more in enforcement mode these days. So they could, I mean, they could in theory call the city out for not being in compliance with our housing element. The good news is they're busy, but the bad news is they've hired an entire enforcement arm with, with enforcement of these new housing laws in mind.
A couple of other things. We have, we discussed earlier, the emergency shelter site. Define that emergency shelter. Is that displaced residents due to wildfire? Are we talking warming shelter? And the second part to that would be, it looks like we're going general commercial by right. But wouldn't most of those sites be in a city-owned facility? And is everything that the city owns zone public?
I think I would like to bring that one back to you all in the May and have a better explanation of it. Emergency shelters are intended to house unhoused people. It's not about responding to a disaster. It's about having housing for unhoused people. So that is the type of emergency shelter. We did a fairly detailed analysis of different commercial sites, thinking that we're not going to allow this in a residential area. And really, we're examining commercial highway or, or general commercial, either of those. And I just don't remember all the nuts and bolts of how we arrived at general commercials being what we thought is the best district to bring forward. But we can, we can bring that forward. And we're going to be asking you to adopt an ordinance that chooses a district. So that's something that our.
Be able then to address at that point? Because that one sounds like it's all would be private sector buildings in those commercial zonings, correct?
Some of these are privately owned sites. There's, I think there's at least one city-owned site in the mix, if I recall correctly.
And to meet, to check the box, we have to identify the zone?
We have to have a zone, and it can't be so, we can't choose a zone that we have like one site that's zoned. We have to choose a zone that seems plausible, that is plausible for development of an emergency shelter.
Okay, then one more. The Leisure Town site, that could be done affordable. That would still have to comply to age restricted, correct? Or does that override the age restriction in that neighborhood?
I don't know if that site is part of the age restricted community. So again, that's a great question, and I can, that's something that is knowable and we can find out. But as far as I know, it's not. And so it really has always been thought of that it would be multifamily housing broadly. And then this new state law says if 20% of it is deed restricted to low income, then it doesn't even go through a public hearing process. It would just get approved as a building permit.
That's all my questions. We're going to have a lot of people in front of us with these projects. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Street reporting. Commissioner Oden.
Yes, I have a question on HE 5, affordable housing construction expand quantified objective. What does that mean?
HE 5 is the city's new and has been revised. There's a lot of strikeout on this version, I'm looking at this, the last version. This is the city's policy about affordable housing production. It did say at one point, the city will help facilitate the construction of affordable housing. And now it's just straight up says the city will facilitate the construction of affordable housing. This is part of our last discussion with our state reviewer. And it says through implementing four of the following six strategies. So essentially, we have six options to choose from as a city, and we need to pick four of them. And we have to make it all happen by, there's a date in here somewhere. I'm just going to try to find that real quick. March of 2024. We have to do initial assessment in March of 2026, we have to have implemented. So the four choices are meeting with partners to look at a land trust model. And this is something that we can't explore the potential to, but we need to meet with people to offer the program. So land trust is one option. New measures for local funding of affordable housing. And that could be in the form of the inclusionary ordinance. It could be TOT, affordable housing linkage for commercial, there's lots of different ways to do that. And we've, we've committed that we would implement one or more of those funding sources if we choose that program. The third program is about working with developers to identify suitable sites and funding sources for affordable rental projects. And so this is the city, and this is actually Emily Cantu, our Housing Community Services Director, who's here this evening, working with developers to help them find money to help subsidize the cost of their development, to get that affordability restriction. And there's a few more options. One is another partnership with developers to pursue home funding. Home is another funding source for affordable housing. And then we have an option to work with nonprofits to, it deals with having more long-term affordability agreements. So these are very specific things. The good news is we have to pick four of them. We don't have to do all six of them, but we are expected to have the exploration completed by '24 and have implemented four of them by '26.
Okay, so that kind of segues through another question that I have with the inclusionary housing study. That would HE 5 be tied in with that study?
If we, if, yes, the inclusionary housing ordinance, if we have, if we establish inclusionary zoning, this council would have an option of deciding that people can accomplish inclusionary by contributing a fee. That fee would be then a new funding source to fund affordable housing. So yes, that implementation of that policy, if the council wants to go a certain way, could achieve the goals of that other policy.
No, I was just wondering if it would be kind of cross-referenced when the feasibility study?
Absolutely.
So that way it's not, you know, not necessarily checking boxes, but it's kind of showing, well, if we do this, then we get this, kind of, okay. Next question I have is more of a kind of curiosity because it's District 6. Is the Vanden Townhome project, without going in detail what that project is? So that's something that's been vacant for a while, and that is identified as military housing?
Let me pull that site up because I want to make sure I'm talking.
I don't want to go like left field here or anything.
No, no, no.
But it was one of the mentions was with HE 2D, the special housing needs military.
This is, this site is, yeah, please. Emily Cantu has a lot of more information and background on this site. I need the elevator version of it too.
Okay, elevator version. This is a city-owned site. It was donated to the former redevelopment agency to be used for military housing purposes.
Okay.
So that's the short, very short answer.
Okay, so city property. So if somebody does come and wants to develop this and for military housing, they would still need to have that 20% low, low income to make it ministerial?
It is currently a housing property that's designated for affordable housing development.
Okay.
It doesn't have to all be affordable. So it would be done through negotiations with staff, then presented to the council, and they would make the final decision of what that development's going to look like.
Okay, okay, cool, thank you.
So would that, could that, for instance, follow like the surplus land?
It would. Yeah, the city council would first make a decision if it would be surplus and like a market project where they could still come in with the 20% and get the ministerial approval. Or the city council could decide that it's exempt surplus land for affordable housing. We would do a request for a proposal, get proposals in, try to pick the best developer and the best project possible for the city. And that project would then go forward to the council to consider and approve.
And just because I'm trying to, you know, grapple with how this works for all of us to understand. So if it goes through a process like that, that might be able to check a box, you know, as far as affirmatively furthering or, you know, what box might that check would be the better question? that check would be the better question?
The housing element does discuss that exact process that you brought up. So you nailed it right on the head. It talks about the process, a potential timeline to get potentially a request for a proposal out and get that project developed within this housing element cycle.
Great. Thank you. Sorry for piggybacking on your time.
No, no.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you so much for the presentation, very thorough. Couple of questions. On the Markham site, the change in density, that was because Vacaville has changed in size, right?
Yes. Our new maximum density that we need to allow on our higher density sites went up to 30 because we've gone past that 100,000 population mark.
But if someone wants to come in and develop it, they don't have to make it 30, it's just allowable to be 30?
That's the maximum. They don't, it's not the minimum. It's the maximum. We went from a 24 units to acre maximum to a 30 units to acre maximum, but a new development would just have to hit the minimum.
Okay. My concern is just, I mean, that area's always been talked about being developed, but the geography of some of those lots aren't the best. But it seems like we would just be cramming more people into an already dense place in one location in town. And so it's just concerning that it just seems to be continuing that the state allows us to change the density to do that. But then you look at it. So it's just something I'd like to follow up on and have more conversation. The Nuttree Airport sites, those three lots behind, which specific sites are we talking about, the housing ones?
I need to find the policy that talks about them. I'm not sure that I have a slide on that.
Are those the three, are those the three lots behind Nuttree Commissary?
Need to make up my mind about which microphone I'm using. These sites are shown in yellow when I get to the right. So here we are. This is Northville. It's good. We're going to find these as we get closer to the airport, and we'll know which sites we're talking about. It's this site here at the Nuttree Airport. This is the vacant site that has the, this is the one actually that has a pipeline project on it. This is the one that has the Nuttree Apartments that are currently in the building department for, under review.
Okay, because those have been talked about for, that, those spots have been talked about for a long time, making those workable, livable. So there is something coming down the, on that? Okay, awesome. And then, I'm good. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to Commissioner Bergerson. All questions, if you guys can think of them, definitely thank you for asking them.
Sure. Director Morris, I think earlier you mentioned, I think you identified farm workers and stated that Vacaville has a low population of farm workers. Where do we get that data from? Where's that extracted from?
We, and I, we can, I can get more precise information on this, but in general, we get the data from the census and from the American Community Survey. And we, like the cities of Benicia and probably Fairfield, I definitely know Benicia, were surprised when the state's comments came back and said, no, you need to rest farm worker housing because neither Benicia nor Vacaville within city limits really has farm worker housing. The state's point, though, which professionally, I believe, is a valid one, is that this county employs a lot of farm workers. And so all of the incorporated cities in this county should be planning for and creating housing to serve that workforce, because our county's agricultural industry relies on it. So it wasn't much of a fight. It was just a little bit of surprise. All of the cities in Solano County have to have policies about farm worker housing to accommodate the more regional need.
One more question to follow up on. Do you think that the census is low out of a fear to report living here, status, immigration, et cetera?
That's, that's always a fear with the census, is that it relies on people to respond. But it's also scientific and gets done every 10 years. And so there's a certain rigor to it. But just looking at where the agriculture activities are, it's unclear why we don't have a reported population of farm workers.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have many questions, excellent questions from my colleagues. I am curious, though, about the farm worker housing in particular. Where, what does farm worker housing entail? Because I, that's one thing. And then, like, in terms of like the five by right uses, if you could just, because it's kind of, you know, technocratic language, if you could just unpack those for us a little bit, just to get a better understanding of like the, you know, the people and the flesh and blood behind some of these descriptions.
Yeah, let me start with the farm worker housing. And I'm going to draw on my experience working in two other cities in two counties that have a lot of farm worker, farm workers and housing. I worked for the city of Santa Rosa in Sonoma County, where everything is grown and harvested. And then I also worked for the city of Napa in Napa County. So in each of those cities, especially Sonoma County, actually, farm worker housing is a type of deed restricted affordable housing. So the persons, the amount they pay for their rent doesn't exceed 30% of their income. And so these rates are very low relative to the wages that farm workers typically make. It usually is presented in the form of apartments on a small scale, actually. When I worked in San Mateo County, it could actually be people dropping mobile homes onto their property, because you couldn't put new housing in San Mateo County. That was not, that was frowned upon, but farm worker housing was okay. But in current days, I guess over the last couple decades, the housing I've seen in Sonoma County and Napa County is either standalone apartment complexes where most of the residents are farm workers and are required to be farm workers. And then the other option, and I'm familiar with the projects under construction, the city of Napa right now, just due to like their 27 different funding sources for this deed restricted project, it's a mixture of supportive housing, veteran housing, farm worker housing. It's a true, a true community of people from a variety of backgrounds, because that's how they were able to pull off the funding. So I don't know if that answers your question about farm worker housing.
No, I was just, so is there, on the scope of farm worker housing, I kind of grew up in farm worker housing in Winters, right? And so some of those conditions are, I would describe as uninhabitable, right? And so is there some sort of an assessment or review of whether the conditions are habitable or the housing is?
That's actually already embedded in those other housing policies that talk about the city embarking on, not just considering, but actually studying housing conditions in the city of Vacaville specifically. But to your point, state law and state funding has been supportive of farm worker housing for a couple decades now, because it's recognized that farm workers often live in really substandard housing. And that because our counties and our cities rely on their work, cities and counties should endeavor to provide, you know, safe, clean, sanitary housing that's well managed by a nonprofit, et cetera, versus some of the things that happen out in the wild.
Gotcha. Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry for taking your time.
No, I'm sharing the mic with Vice Chair Fortney as well.
No, and that, can you, most of this is all going to be unincorporated area, all this ag-related farm housing, because it can be done by right. Can you get us the housing policy by, from the county in regards to agriculture housing and farm?
Yeah, of course.
Circulated to the, for us?
I'd be happy to do that.
Just so everybody here has a kind of an idea to wrap their head around.
And to your point, Vice Chair Fortney, most of this is probably happening in the county, but the state has said, look, you have these cities in this county that's an ag county, cities ought to have programs and to embark on creating housing to support this industry.
Categories, because they're, you know, this is our policies that maybe if we can understand a little bit more about what they mean.
Can you give me a slide number or?
Slide 26.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'm going to go out to go back in.
Otherwise known as ministerial, right?
Yeah. So the concept with these, so ministerial means that if someone wanted to, for example, build an emergency shelter in the new zoning district that we've established, that this is allowed by right, it means they can go straight to the building department. And they have to turn in plans to show how they're going to build a shelter. And those plans do get reviewed against fixed standards, like zoning setbacks, building and construction techniques, fire code. But the city doesn't have discretion. Ministerial means the city can't say, oh, we're not sure about this use on this site. The use is allowed, and everything is about these fixed standards. So emergency shelters is that. Large residential care facilities, I mean, broadly can be child, care of seniors in a licensed setting, care of developmentally disabled adults in a licensed setting. So it's those places where people are living actually as a family, they're considered a family, sharing a house, but are under care of a service provider. So our current Landings and Development Code does allow them by right up to a certain number, but the state has adjusted the number to which you have to allow by right. So we're going to be correcting that. And so if someone came in wanting to do this up to that new maximum number, they would not need a planning approval. They would make any building modifications through a building process, and they'd be off to the races with their use. Employee housing, I'm less familiar with the exact details here, but in concept, employee housing is, usually it's housing owned by an employer who's renting it out to individual employees that work for them. So that one I would need to look a little more at notes on. If you would like me to, I can.
And really, that was what grabbed my eye, is I'm thinking farm worker housing is different from employee housing in what way? And is employee housing somehow at a higher standard than farm worker housing? Whether or not the standards are consistent would be my concern, because you also have transportation issues that are unique to all employees. But in particular, you know, I think farm workers have maybe a harder time getting to work than if you're going to a more urban setting.
I will commit to getting back to this commission on the topic of employee housing, because there's an answer somewhere in those 750 pages.
And, you know, for employee housing, I'm also thinking about our, our goals for, you know, bioengineering and whether or not we're reducing uniquely Vacaville to accomplish that goal that is imperative of the council. If we're going to be a leader in BioCon Valley, how are we doing that in terms of employee housing? It's just, I think all commissioners should be able to articulate like an elevator pitch as, you know, how is Vacaville unique in this area?
Thank you for your comments on that, Chair Klein. One thing I can speak to about employee housing is that it's actually forbidden under, I think it's federal law, to discriminate against people based on their source of income. So you're actually not able to, as an employer, build housing and say that only people that work here get to live here. And so it's actually a pretty complex regulatory environment. But I will get back up to speed on what it means for our housing element and be, we'll have a section of that in the May 16 staff report for the Planning Commission.
And just to be fair, what I'm wondering here is, is there a way for us to, to put Vacaville on a, to be able to offer something more as an incentive for employers who are trying to relocate to Vacaville and bring those jobs with them, where there's some sort of a, I know we have these overlays that we've discussed, but in terms of like how housing operates within that context, I promise I'm going somewhere with this. It's important because these standards that we're adopting that Fortney was getting at earlier, you know, there are ways of enforcing standards that are unique and are legal versus goals, right? So I'd like to see, you know, some ways, understanding how are we making Vacaville a place that incentivizes relocating, rather than, you know, setting us up in some way to be penalized for not doing or reaching a standard at the end of the day.
I hear you. And I do want to say these other two items on this list, because you asked about the five. Single room occupancies, our code doesn't allow those by right anywhere, but this is another type of housing. I'm familiar with one that I used to go to community meetings in back in the early part of my career, where people live typically in really small apartments. These came about before there was such thing as a micro apartment, but they're usually very small apartments. They may have cooking facilities inside them, they may not. Areas providing a lot of housing in a small space and are often a way for someone to get into housing that they can afford and ultimately then advance out of that housing. And then, of course, the housing isn't available for the next person. But that's that, single room occupancy is a specific cold sounding term for what I just described. And then the low barrier navigation centers are places where people can seek help, connecting with housing and government services. And anyone can go there and receive those services. And our code, this is a very popular concept with the state, our code does not allow this use by right anywhere. So we have to do that.
And that's where I'm, you know, bringing it back to the beginning, how do we nudge things forward to meet some of these goals that we have without also setting it up to where we're being penalized or we're creating an attorney's fee racket in some way. From an attorney, actually, I know how to spot those. So I'm, you know.
You can tuck yourself out of a paycheck.
Well, a lot of my clients are low income now. So my concern would be, you know, for something like these permit, the following, permits by right, can we be creative here? Like tiny homes is an area where it's a lot, you've seen it in Europe and other areas of the country that are leaning into this for farm worker housing and for student housing as well, is an option.
There's nothing in our regulations that preclude, actually, I think, any type of housing from happening. It's sort of a matter of what regulatory process is set forth. And the state has given us specific guidance that we have to allow certain specific types of housing or services by right in at least one district. But also, together, our 40 policies and our programs have a lot of other things that support a variety of housing. So I don't think there's anything in this housing element that would preclude novel forms of housing from happening.
I guess the question is, do we have an overlay approach? You know, like our approach with BioCon Valley, where we want to put an overlay, perhaps, or I've heard it discussed, I'm not speaking for anybody or anyone. But I've heard this concept for BioCon Valley, where we have this overlay around a district where we're able to incentivize development in a certain area. So that's to be contrasted with what we're doing today, we're discussing with the housing element, right?
Those kind of programs work hand in hand, though. And the example you just gave about BioCon or incentivizing that, the city council has directed staff to prepare an incentive program that would provide financial incentives for certain types of businesses to come to Vacaville. So that's something that's going to council before the end of this fiscal year. So that kind of, that goes hand in hand, if you will, with housing policies that allow things and recognize that we need to make housing happen, but it's a little bit different, at least how I'm thinking of an incentive program.
And then the one area, final question, the one area that you alluded to earlier around permitting, I think was like mobile homes, right? So like in mobile homes, that's where HCD has jurisdiction over, for example, shelters. You know, I think we might have heard about something with Vallejo and mobile homes and shelters several months ago. What is that about?
The mobile home requirement that we're required to do is to define mobile homes as a single-family home. And if someone wants to construct a mobile home in lieu of an actual stick-built structure, that's, it's okay to do that. That's actually been on the state law for quite a while, but our current code does not recognize that. So we will be cleaning it up to make it clear that if you owned undeveloped property and you wanted to use a manufactured or mobile home, that that's not an issue for the city as far as you producing that housing unit. The topic you're raising is about a trailer, a mobile home park in Vacaville, where they are under the authority of the state. Every mobile home park, the permitting and the inspections and all that are through the state of California through HCD. We're having some tension between the city's regulatory framework for that site and the state's. And we've been working with the property owner, mainly their attorney, to resolve that issue.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And so we'll look forward to May, to the next meeting. We'll all put that on our calendars, and I'll, I'll be here. Any other questions for? Wonderful. Thank you. Very good. Okay, so we'll now conclude the study session and go to item B, revision of the Vacaville Planning Commission rules and regulations for the transaction of business section 301 related to the timing of the election of officers. We'll invite Chair, or, excuse me, we'll invite Director Morris to unpack this issue for us.
Thank you, Chair Klein. So this item is a recommended revision to the rules and regulations that govern how the Planning Commission operates at the city of Vacaville. The genesis of this item is that after the rules and regulations were last updated in 2020, the city went to district-based council elections. So our timing has not been in sync. The way, with these revisions, once the council makes their appointment, which they do annually, and there's two, three one year, and there's four the next year, so we always have some continuing folks hopefully on our commission, then the way this has been revised, and there's actually a subsequent revision, is all on the dais for each of you. So right now, what it says under officers, that the officers of the Planning Commission shall consist of a chair and vice chair. The chair and vice chair shall be elected annually at the first meeting in June by a majority of the commission. So these appointments are happening in February. We wanted to revise the rules to align with that, but not be specific about the month, just be more specific that the election should follow the appointments. So as proposed- follow the appointments. So as proposed with a little additional language, it's on the sheet of paper on the dais, it would read, the officers of the planning commission shall consist of a chair and vice chair. The chair and vice chair should be elected annually by a majority of the commission at the first meeting, following the city council's annual appointment of commissioners or as soon thereafter as is practical. So if the commission adopts this, the rules will be amended. And then we will be bringing an item at the May meeting for the annual election of the chair and vice chair. The folks appointed to that term by a vote of the, of the commission would serve for slightly less than a year because next year there'll be a reappointment process and the election will probably result in like a 10 month term for that. So that, that's what's in front of the commission. We're not in any way trying to be overly bureaucratic, but when we looked at the rules and regulations, we realized it was time to update them to reflect the new district elections. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I think every year I've been on the commission, it's been out of sync with this rule. So yeah. So now we'll receive commissioner questions and then public comment and we'll close public comment after that. So starting with Commissioner Vargas, anything?
No questions.
Okay. Do we have a, I see no public comment. So we'll close public comment after, we'll open public?
Sorry, Chair, you have to open public comment.
I was just in the midst of doing that, correcting myself. Yes. So we'll open public comment and allow the public to comment on this issue. Invite anyone who wishes to comment to line up at the podium. Seeing no one, we will close public comment. Thank you very much for that, Andrea. And with that, I'll call for a simple motion and a second.
Motion.
Moved by Rudy and seconded by Wilkerson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now go on to item nine, Director's Report. Director Morris?
Thank you, Chair Klein. So city council actions pertaining to planning commission items. On March 28th, the council received the same presentation as the planning commission did about the 2022 general plan annual progress report. They accepted the report and we were able to submit our annual report to HCD on time again. And then on April 11th, the council authorized the mayor to send a letter opposing SB 423. This is a bill by Senator Weiner that would extend SB 35 in perpetuity. SB 35 allows housing by right if you meet certain criteria. It also, the new law, it amends the 35 by allowing housing in places that were previously excluded, like the coastal zone. It does include a prevailing wage requirement. So someone wanting to implement 423 would also have to use that kind of labor. It had some other restrictions, but essentially the council was concerned about it and they unanimously authorized the mayor to send a letter through the league of cities to express the city's not support for that bill. And then as the evening went on, the Roberts Ranch Village E final map was approved by the council. You all may know final maps, it's on a hearing. It's really more of a ministerial action, but it has to go on an agenda. So that did happen. The council received a presentation of the draft safety element and environmental justice element, or actually environmental justice goals, policies and programs. And then I presented the council with a presentation about the city's general plan and zoning and how those things work and how they govern land use in the city of Vacaville. And that's part one of a multi-part presentation. Part two is tomorrow night where the council at a special meeting will be discussing housing development and then part, it's either two or three, depending on how we're counting, continuation of the land use policy discussion. And this housing element presentation will be going to council a week from today. And then we'll be concluding the series on May 9th with the inclusionary zoning discussion with the council. So there's a lot going on. There's a lot that's been going on. And as I mentioned, we are having a special meeting with the council tomorrow night. That concludes the city actions pertaining to planning commission items. On the topic of the tentative schedule for future planning commission items, I had to get the latest cheat sheet at tentatively on May 16th, this planning commission will be reviewing the city's capital improvement program for general plan consistency and SEQA. So that's a fun one. You'll see all the city's projects, sort of the new ones that are being added at the five-year CIP. The second item is the final housing element. I've got some work to do to get ready to bring it back to you, but we will be bringing it to you on May 16th, hopefully for your recommendation of adoption. And there will be a public hearing as well. We have a safety environmental justice elements coming back to you for final recommendation. We have the chair and vice chair election. And I might have one other thing, but right now it's not solid. So it's going to be a busy evening. We have to bring snacks.
I'll bring jelly beans.
Okay, good to know. And then Josh Montemeyer, Assistant Director, is going to be presenting the monthly community development report.
Real quick, I have got Commissioner Wilkerson.
Oh, sure.
On, on the special council meeting tomorrow, is public comment allowed?
I'm getting different reports on that. My understanding is that a special meeting as a member of the public, you cannot comment generally, like on topics that are not on the agenda. My expectation is, yeah, that you can contact, you can speak to the agenda item, but I'm confirming that with a city clerk.
Okay.
I think the nuance is you can't make broad comment on any topic. You only can comment on what's on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure I'm not imagining that.
I can provide clarification. There won't be general opening of public comment, but there will be public comment allowed on the specific item.
Oh, good.
If it's agenda.
Ready? Good evening, Chair Klein and planning commissioners. I'm going to be introducing the community development monthly activity report for the month of March. So kick it off with the building division. Some monthly activity highlights right here. I have a chart showing the March 2023 totals and the difference from the previous month for the overall building permits issued. We were up by 142. Single family permits were also up by eight. Single family permits filed was also up by two. There was no change in multifamily permits issued, meaning no apartment buildings or complexes like that were issued permits. ADU permits were actually down by one. We did not issue any in the month of March. So in February, we issued one ADU permit. Solar permits issued were up by 90 and total fees collected were up by 340,000 and inspections completed 82. So this is track of data as of April 12th. So here's some building permit trends, excuse me, showing monthly trend over one year. Just to give you an idea of where we're at last year in March, we had 427 total building permits issued and we're roughly at the same amount at 474. We're slightly higher this year, but we're trending upwards. And these are the, a bar graph representing how much solar permits have been issued over the last year compared to the previous year. We're on an upwards trend. This graph really doesn't make that show of significance, but this graph will show you how when we trend up with single family dwelling permits, also the solar permits trend up. So if you notice, for this year, starting in January, we're significantly trending up as building permits for single family dwelling units have gone up. I'll segue now into the current planning activities by district. In District One, we had some approved applications, which include the Millennium Center GPA initiation, Pacheco Co. Custom Home, that's a completely resident custom home, Academy of 21st Century Learning Private School, and a new application came in for the clear channel digital billboard conversion, which is to take an existing billboard and convert it to electric. In District Two, we had an approved application for Chevron Hydrogen fueling station to add three of those to an existing station. And then notable building plan, building permit plan check included the Wildhawk at Roberts Ranch. There were a bunch of new plan checks came in for that. So permits under review. In District Three, we had an approved application for the Blake Austin College Medical School. There's no new activity in districts four or five, but in District Six, the South Town Apartments were approved at city council. And then a new application came in for villages at Vanden, which is approximately 81 single family homes and 81 accessory dwelling units. So more information for that will come. And just to let commissioners know, development activity reports are available online at cityofvacaville.com/developmentactivity. So segueing into advanced planning, just two quick highlights. You had a housing element study session by Director Morris. She did such a great job. But if you want to check out all the material, that is online at cityofvacaville.com/housingelement. And as she mentioned, the next informational session will be next week on April 25th. And then just one last important push that we wanted the public to know is that the Community Health Ideas Online Survey is available still through April 28th. This is public input for the environmental justice goals, policies and actions. So just a reminder for the public and for the commissioners that have even taken it yet, to go to cityofvacaville.com/healthsurvey. The survey's available in both English and in Spanish.
Josh, did we start in, I thought, did we receive emails about this too? If you received, okay, that's what I thought.
There was a press release that was released today as well as pushes on social media.
Guys are on it. Good.
Thank you.
Quick question. Can we, and it might be for Director Morris. Can we get an update or find out where this would fit in your director's comments? If you have a Zoom community meeting in regards to a project, after that Zoom call at our next meeting, can we get a brief debrief or participation so it's not coming when the project gets to us that far in advance or that far later?
Thank you, Vice Chair Portney. As of understanding it, you'd like us to add to the activity report when we've had a neighborhood meeting and maybe a brief description of how many attendees and the gist of the public comment. We can totally do that. And I really, I like that idea. So they-
For the planning commission.
It looks like a lot of work goes into this. So I want to acknowledge that. And you know, we, we don't want to just be piling on, you know, a lot of work for you guys to be doing. Cause I recognize it's supplemental and SAP's working hard on a lot of things you're supposed to be doing. But for, I am curious about like SEQA actions though. So do, if, can you point me to where we would find that, you know, online? Like I know, I know like for instance, like you don't have to, so if, if, if there's, sometimes projects are reported to the county, right? Not to the clearinghouse. So it's unclear whether or not and, and what is actually happening in, in the realm of like a state statute. That's, you know, sort of completely within our, our jurisdiction of understanding. So I'm curious, like, how do I understand what's going on with SEQA in Vacaville, like in a single spot?
During these monthly activity reports, every time we highlight a project that was approved, it's not just implied, it's essential that SEQA was completed as part of that. In many cases for these smaller projects, I'll pick an example, the Pacheco Co. Custom Residence in a sort of hilly part of Vacaville, that project was exempt from SEQA. We made the determination, the approval action. And I do not believe a notice of exemption was posted at the county because we don't do that routinely for all the projects. So every month, when you're hearing about the things that have been approved, SEQA is definitely part of that. And if you have specific questions about that, we will absolutely be able to tell you it was exempt or this is what we did. But we don't have SEQA determinations or actions outside of project approvals because it's only when the project is approved is that all wrapped up and that determination is made officially.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just asking like as a researcher really, because I, I've been, I clerked at OPR and this is one of those things that like, it's like a black hole for me. I don't understand, just like even as a practitioner, how some of this works. So it, for, for people who are, are putting projects together, sometimes it's, it's great to know like, okay, I just follow this rubric or this is how, you know, it would work for, you know, X project. It would just be really neat to understand, you know, how SEQA works in practice and what a sample document would look like if you're sending it off to the county versus sending it to the clearinghouse. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll now proceed to commissioner comments. Now it's time for commissioners to share what they've been up to, potential items, items of interest between meetings or announce as appropriate. So we'll start with Commissioner Wilkerson.
I have one small thing. A kid I used to coach, throughout his life, he was homeless from about seven years old and nine years old, and then again in, in high school. But he has recently fought, fought through all that and recently graduated from UC Berkeley ball team. And so I'm going to share his, his story and his article. There's a really big write-up in the paper down at, down at USC, but I'm just really proud of him and I wanted him to be publicly acknowledged. Kristen, I love you. It's fantastic what you've done. Keep it up. But it's, it's really incredible to see some, but you don't know what everyone goes through as, as, you know, as a child. And he wasn't homeless by the typical definition because him and his father worked. He just couldn't afford a place to live, right? And so that's, that's another story for another day, but I'm just, he had a recent article come out. They just had spring ball. I'm just really, really proud of him. So I just wanted to give him some public acknowledgement and his flowers.
I didn't thank you earlier, but thank you for your presentation. It was great. And Josh, thank you for the slides. I'm a visual person, so I appreciate it very much. My only comments are about Commissioner Banta and I went, and Director Morris and Georgian went to the planning commissioners conference down in Southern California. And it was incredible. It, it was, it was so good because I didn't get to go to the one last year. And there was a lot on SB 330. I did the SEQA and advanced SEQA classes, which I really appreciate. Answered kind of a lot of questions that get brought up at our meetings and council meetings. And it was just, it was fantastic. It was great to get to know our new commissioner as well and really enjoyed it. So I learned a lot about a lot of legislation that's going to be like steamrolling our way. I mean, this is just, it isn't a couple of things. There's a lot coming. So.
No, Amanda, or Commissioner Dean, it's a question for you and maybe Commissioner, Director Morris, would it be something where we could get a presentation and like, because I know we, she can't share things with us without it being a serial meeting, for example, by email. But if, if we're curious and to get your thoughts about what, what the, the relevant feedback is for us as we do this work, could we do, can we agendaize something for, if Commissioner Rudy or if, if, you know, any other commissioner would want to do a presentation like what they learned, how would we accomplish that?
I think Director Morris has one.
I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not putting you on the spot.
I'll second it.
I mean, if you want to do a little advanced SEQA, you know, hey, here we go.
I'm happy to bring items of interest to the planning commission as business items or discussion items. I have a bit of a capacity issue to bring anything additional in May because it's, it's rather hectic, but I, looking at the summer, if, if there's at least a couple or three or four of the commission that would like it, I could certainly recap some of the sessions from the conference with the help of the commissioners that attended. One of them, I've shared with several of you, but not in a serial meeting, that it was just great, was about objective design standards and what they are and what they do and how they work. And I, I cannot be the person who taught at the seminar because they were amazing, but that and there were a few other topics as Commissioner Redine highlighted that I could bring, but it'd probably be June or July at the earliest.
I should do a much better job than I did, would, but yeah.
I just think, you know, it would be great to have a standing, to have an inclusive environment for that kind of thing to happen. If commissioners want to share what they learned, if we could just have some kind of a way to do that without people feeling like, you know, they can't because there are such constraints on our abilities to correspond with each other or to learn, you know, what you think would be great for us to know. I didn't want to, are you?
I'm good. No, no, that was it.
All right. Vice Chair Portney?
Nothing other than welcoming our Commissioner Banta. City council got it right. Good commissioner and look forward to working with her.
Nothing other than thank you for appointing me and I'm excited to start. And yeah, I joined Commissioner Redine at the, and Director Morris at the planning commission conference. And it was amazing to be in a room full of all like-minded people from different perspectives and different experiences. Like Wilkerson has shared like very different backgrounds that a lot of people came from, but all trying to get the same thing accomplished. And I think that's why one of my points too earlier was how do we, how do we get this done, right? Like, how do we do something? And that language is really important and scary because it has ramifications, but really important to get something done and make some changes for the future. So I'm very excited to get to know all of you. So thank you.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yeah. Director Morris, great presentation. Thank you very much. Very informative. Thank you to you and to your staff as always. Commissioner Vantab, welcome. Glad to have you here. I did want to put in a plug for the COPS versus kids for N-Fire this Saturday, Boys and Girls Club. This is the second annual, oh, my, my son will be participating. I'll give a shout out to him because he's part of the ACES program at Markham Elementary. And so didn't get a chance to do it last year, so going to be doing it this year. And so really looking forward to it. Should be a hoot. So and Commissioner Wilkerson, I want to thank you, sir, for always bringing some really good heartfelt stories in the community. Very much appreciated. There's a lot that goes on that we don't know. There's a lot that goes on that we don't know, and it's good to hear stories like that, so thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I second that. I also would like to share something I have, was it the golf tournament for the Levin yesterday? With golf very poorly with the mayor and others, but if you're not familiar with the Levin, it's, it's an after-school program that is unique in our community. I've spent years volunteering there and reading here at the Levin in Vacaville, but there's also, it's in Fairfield, and it, children like Christian. Oh. No, no, sorry. Okay. No, I, anyway, I would like to just adjourn, I guess, in honor of our own impact that's being made at the Levin and Christian and others like him. But that, we're adjourned.